Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:00 PM on Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get underway this evening, many of you here in this room already know this, but we had, we lost a student from Park Avenue Elementary School in the last couple of weeks, and I'd like to observe a moment of silence for him and for his family. There's been an outpouring of support from the school community and the community at large, but I ask all of us to hold his family close in our hearts. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the October 10th, 2023 meeting. Is there any discussion about these minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
They're moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Good evening, Mrs. Prangeli.
Good evening. The first item I have for you is a personnel update. I would like to welcome a few new members to the Webster Public School family. Katie Lloyd Vansky is an ABA at Webster Middle School. We have Mandy Jeraminski, who is a paraprofessional at Webster Middle School, and we have Julie Lobb, who is a BCBA, and she will be at Park Ave., I believe. Welcome, and we look forward to having you onboard. The next item I have for you is family and community engagement. I recently sat in on a webinar held by the Commissioner of Education. He announced this week that is, there are going to be a statewide push for parent and family engagement to help with the issue of chronic absenteeism. Overall, the state has improved with attendance from COVID. As you know, we've experienced a lot of absenteeism since COVID, trying to reengage our students back into the system. But we are still reporting one in four students are chronically absent. To be chronically absent, that means you're missing 10% or 18 days of absenteeism from school during the school year. So they are going to be pushing out statewide correspondence to parents and trying to get attention to engage and reengage parents and students back into the school systems to improve attendance. There's going to be some funding to try and support school districts and get creative with ideas. I know we used to have Saturday school across the district years ago. They're entertaining that again and welcoming that, different ways to reengage our students to be present and maybe offset to help counter days that maybe they missed during the school year. So they're still working out the logistics. They're going to be sending out a survey. I definitely will respond and take them up on the additional support as this is a priority for us also here in Webster, really trying to reengage our students to be present and to be here, to be part of our Webster Public School family, to engage in the curriculum, in the work, and be a big part of the school community. So we'll be working on that. Any questions about that? No. Next, we had a very exciting visitor this past week on Wednesday, October 18th. We were honored to welcome Her Royal Highness, the Infina Elena, sister of King Philip VI of Spain, and officials from Deishan Maffrey. We also welcomed physicians from UMass Memorial Medical Center, who recently visited the Webster Middle School to promote child safety in Massachusetts. The special visit included the Safety Quest RV. It was outfitted with computer games designed to teach students about fire, home, play, and street safety. In addition to the Safety Quest program at the Webster Middle School, they also visited the Real Madrid program at Webster Middle School. They put on a display of soccer and baseball, I mean soccer, I'm sorry, and basketball, not baseball. And they visited some classrooms within the high school. So I'm going to ask Mr. Collins to jump in. I'm going to ask Mohammed to jump in. I just got some quick pictures today. I threw them together quickly in a slideshow, just so you could see the kids. But it was a really very organized visit. You know, we were limited at what we could do here. We had to have certain permissions. She did come. She had some security with her. We were able to have her meet and speak with some of the kids. She was lovely. She was very down-to-earth, and I think overall, the schools were very excited to have her. I was very proud of our student bodies. But, Mr. Collins, I'll let you take it over from here.
Yeah, good evening. One of my bullet points this evening is to talk about the partnership with Matfre and to see the work here that you got to see with our, these are our vocational students, which are 18-plus. That is in our partnership with Best Buddies, and that is funded by Matfre and the foundation. We are really excited from the administrative standpoint that the partnership is there. There's such a positivity around their connection with us right now, and that is really important. And so it was a great day for us. I think that Superintendent Prangeli can agree to watch them to, there were tears at one point with us, both she and I, with them actually serving the princess, and it chokes me up a little bit because they were so stressed and so excited at the same time, right here on the left. And this young lady, to be able to verbalize what that felt like, I have goosebumps, and I wish that you all could have shared with us because it was a really neat experience to watch our students experience this humble, but world leader, in a sense, for them, as Mohammed calls her, a special guest, and very, very much a special guest. It was a really neat experience. I will say a highlight of my leadership here. The partnership moving forward, I think, is so important, and that's one of the things in the bullets, if I may jump ahead. We are just really happy to be able to partner with them, for them to come in and help us. One of the goals for them this year is to help us work through our possible food pantry, getting back up and running for our families and our students that need that, but also for them to be here from a day-to-day aspect, to take part in the events that are not just publicized like this. So we're super excited, and it was a great day. And again, the pictures only say a tiny little bit, but their faces and their communication with someone of this stature and someone that brings this historical concept to them was a really cool thing to watch. It was neat. It was super great.
So they support currently our Best Buddy Program, our One Goal Program, our Real Madrid Program, and the Safety Quest Program. So they spent about 15 minutes to a half an hour in each program, learning about it.
Sorry, our AP language.
Oh, that's right.
So our AP Spanish program, over the years, has grown in terms of more students that like go through in a pathway of sorts, you know, from Spanish 1 through that Level 5 course, and they got to spend time with them. So from a secondary aspect, that's a very high-level, extensive course, and they got to interact with them, and that was really cool to watch as well. And of course, our friends at the middle school here.
So we started the day at the high school. We started with our AP kids, our Spanish kids. We went into our One Goal, and then we came over to the high school and went through the Best Buddy Program, and then we made our way to the middle school, where they put on an exhibition of soccer drills and skills and basketball skills and drills, where they were observed and watched, so they could see how we run our program. She was lovely. This young lady on the right, I don't even know her name, I meant to ask Ms. Peterson, but she was one of the students who first came up and had the courage to introduce herself and talk and speak with her, and it just kind of engaged. I think, I think, I don't know how you felt, Mohammed, but to me, the high school kids seemed a little shyer than the middle school kids. Once, once they opened up, the middle school kids just started speaking freely to her, and the high school kids seemed a little more reserved, like, am I supposed to do this or not?
Yeah, they were. They were, it was like, they were like scared because they were like, oh, it's like the princess. But then like, the teachers were coming up, they were like, it's fine, just greet yourself like a normal person, she's just a normal person. So it was like fun to meet her.
Yep. So she met with and spoke with the kids after in the group. They gave her a shirt signed by all the kids who participated. There's a group shot of them all. And then this is the Safety Quest Mobile, and I want to give a shout out to Danielle Albert, our school nurse. She was a big part of working with UMass and bringing this over and responding with Lynda Johnson. So this is a partnership that serves right now, grade 5, but I think it'll also be used by our middle school and our summer school program with kids. It's really interactive video games that they created. This Safety Quest Mobile can go around. It's a big RV, and inside is all digital games, about fire safety, about street safety, home safety, and it's interactive games. So we were able to go in with the kids and see some of the games. I had the opportunity to play some games, and I wasn't as good as my counterpart here over here, but it was a lot of fun, and the kids seemed to be engaged in playing.
I want to mention the specialist that was helping out, actually a graduate of Bartlett.
Right there.
I'm going to call out here.
So the picture on the right is the doctor from UMass, who was a big part in engaging with getting the mobile up and running. He stated there, he said he, you know, he always wanted to start with injury prevention and surgery prevention for kids, and he never dreamed that this would come to fruition, something like this, this RV. So I have many more pictures, but I just wanted to share a few highlights of the visit. It was exciting to have. I was so proud of our student body and our population of kids here. They just welcomed her, and were on their best behavior, and it was exciting to have her here for the day. So, and I just want to thank Maffrey for their partnerships. They are always willing to support us, not just with that, but even with volunteering during the day, during the school years, Earth Day. They're always willing to lend a hand whenever we need it. All it takes is a phone call, and they, and they're just in. So thank you to Matfre for their partnership. We really appreciate it. Are there any questions about that? No. Okay, I'm going to move on to instructional leadership. Our curriculum director, Jill Chapdeline, and our Project Lead the Way Coordinator, Michelle Bigelow, were asked to and did present at the Project Lead the Way Fall Conference Leadership Session that was held by the 1-8 Foundation. They were highlighted because Webster was able to increase our student engagement in the Project Lead the Way courses and all subgroups. Those subgroups are L, Student with Disabilities, Female, and Race. They were asked to speak to other leaders about equity in the program and how they increased participation. As you know, we have expanded our Project Lead the Way offerings to Webster Middle School students in grades 5 through 8, and that program is called the Project Lead the Way Gateway Program. The curriculum focuses on robotics and automation, green architecture, computer science for innovators and makers. These are being taught by our STEM teacher, Kate Birdy, and I want to give those teachers a shout out because in order to teach a Project Lead the Way course, you have to go through extensive training outside of the school hours. So it's a lot. They spend, I believe it was, we had three teachers, I think, over the summer, who spent anywhere between 80 and 120 hours just in training over the summer. So that's, you know, three weeks, three full weeks of training to be able to teach those courses, and the training is a little less for the middle school, but not much, and Kate took on three courses for herself over at the middle school. So I think they deserve a shout out and a thank you for going above and beyond to bring these programs to our student, looking at different ways to engage with this hands-on project learning. So thank you to them. Any questions about the Project Lead the Way? No. We also just recently joined DESI offering called Implement MA to evaluate and select a high school biology curriculum. A leadership team and a curriculum council has been formed, which is made up of teachers, coaches, site-based, and central office administrators. The leadership team has already begun an in-depth series of trainings, so they need to complete five three-hour trainings throughout the year, and this is a year-long process to help us select a high-quality, culturally responsive curriculum. So I really like the way that they're approaching this. It's a whole approach, getting all stakeholders at the table, so there's ownership of the program, so when you're implementing something new, they're all feeling invested in that. It's a long process, but I think in the end, it's going to be worth it to engage all of our stakeholders. So thank you to Jill for that. We also have our Professional Development Committee. They've been formed this year and started to meet. They have a voice in all of our professional development process and offerings throughout the year, so we look for feedback after every professional development. This committee takes a look at the feedback, and they help to implement and give ideas for future professional development offerings throughout. So that way, we're hearing what teachers want, we're listening, not just teachers, paraprofessionals, ABAs across the district. It's important for them to feel like they're heard and what they really need to help them improve their skill set and their job, and we're listening, and we're trying to give that back as being part of the process. Our GLEAM leadership team has been identified. As you know, we are in our final third year of GLEAM. That grant we did receive was $117,275. That grant covers consultants, some supplies, and teacher stipends. They are having their first meeting on November 2nd, and we will be having our first walkthroughs on November 6th. We have also continued to offer our instructional coaches training to help them implement students that are in coaches' cycles, so that way, they feel confident in their ability to support and work with our staff to help improve instruction throughout the district. And then I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Patty Mackay to talk about the Seal of Biliteracy.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say one thing about the project-based learning. We have, we are in continuation for our 21st Century Grant, which is the Park Avenue Extended Day Program, and it's all about project-based learning. And this year, so each year, we get about $200,000 for the school year and summer. This year, they awarded us an additional $10,000 so that we could send a cohort of teachers to participate, a group of teachers to participate as the PBL cohort. So it's a more extensive training. Some of our teachers have participated in what's called Nuts and Bolts PBL, project-based learning, and so there'll be a group from Park Avenue. And we've been working with robotics, for instance, at Park Avenue in the Extended Day Program. So we've talked with the middle school and said, we're about to purchase some new robotics, the stuff that we had was outdated. Let's use something similar that like feeds what middle school is doing, so that there's some consistency with the, with the programming and the materials. So I just wanted to extend beyond the middle school with, with, with project-based learning, that we're starting younger, and the entire focus of 21st Century after-school program in summer is all project-based learning, which is wonderful. It's enrichment, and it's a great way to engage students and have students really think and develop problem-solving skills, so very early. So it's just a continuation of that, which I think is great. I wanted to give you an update on the Seal of Biliteracy. We have a committee that consists of the World Language Teacher, the L Teacher Administration, and myself, as well as guidance, and we have come up with a couple of phases of our implementation of Seal of Biliteracy. We have registered. So our next phase is to notify families. We've identified the letter that we're going to be sending out, and what we want our families to know is that Webster is registered as a Seal of Biliteracy District, that students can demonstrate their literacy skills in their native language as well as in English, and we'll explain, you know, the different components, like what qualifies for what, and that if there are any students that are interested in taking that other language assessment, they, there's a process. So we want to explain that to families, we want to explain that to the students. We're going to be sending out a mailing to families, we're putting it on Dojo, we're putting it on the website, we're putting it in Power School Announcements, we're, we'll put it in any newsletters that go out, and we will mail it, we'll insert a hard copy in with the report cards that get mailed home. So there's a variety of ways for this information to reach the families. And then the students, we're going to target specifically into the Spanish class, into the L classes. We'll target students that are former Ls, so students that have reached a certain language of proficiency in English, but no longer receive L services. And then we'll email students, and we'll put it in Google Classroom. Students then will have an opportunity to sign up. I want more information, I'm interested. There'll be a short application, they'll meet with guidance, and the deadline for that application will be December 1st. Students will then let us know what languages they want to test in, and then we can order these other language assessments, and then we'll administer the tests, and some students will have these really beautiful seals on their diplomas that say Seal of Biliteracy, which is a great honor. So that's where we stand with that. It's a big, it's a big, big change for us. It's a, it's a nice addition for, for the district. Any questions?
No, I just think it's great to recognize students. I think that there's been this continuum in society, right, where speaking a different language as your native language was seen as an obstacle to overcome, whereas it's hopefully changing into something that is to be celebrated and, and, you know, highlighted for people. So it's a great, great thing to see that happening.
I'd just like to thank you for all your efforts on that. Awesome to bring these additional things to our kids, so that's wonderful. I only have one more thing under Other Updates. Recently, on 10/20, I went to Southern Wester County Educational Collaborative Meeting. They distributed our Quarter 1 reports, so I put those in your packets for your review. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is a report from our business manager. Good evening, Ms. Kandos.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to give you a couple updates regarding the school building project. First, we're actually in the process of preparing to move some athletic, as well as musical equipment, into storage. We will be storing that at Maffrey. That move is scheduled for November 9th. We also, myself and the Athletic Director, did a walkthrough at St. Joseph's School. St. Joseph's has offered their gymnasium for us for the winter athletic program, and so a big shout out to Beth Boudreaux, who's the principal at St. Joe's, for all of the assistance in accommodating us and allowing us to bring our equipment over there in advance, as well as our scoreboard, I mean, our table, we'll be bringing over there as well. And so work is underway to get that season going. We've also gotten some feedback with the new traffic pattern, as well as where the new parking is relative to visitor parking at the high school. Parents have expressed concern that they can't identify where that parking is, and we do agree, it's a little challenging when you come in, you think you should be driving a little further than you need to. So we're going to put some additional signage there to help them and eliminate some of that frustration that we've gotten from the school. Ryan, I don't know if there's anything that you'd want to add to that, but I think that covers it. The next big topic is us getting our site approval and our site permit for the construction project. We were scheduled to go in front of the planning board this Monday, however, due to the rescheduled town meeting, because we did not have a quorum there, that conflicts with the planning board meeting, and we can't have those meetings on the same evening. So through some conversations with the planner, with the town administrator, as well as the chairman of the planning board, we will be going in front of the planning board on November 13th. We had a very successful meeting last week, and when I say very successful, I think we got through our final round of reviews with the town peer reviewer and engineer in preparation for that meeting. So we feel very comfortable that going into that meeting on November 13th, that we should be in, in really good shape, that we've responded to all of the concerns and findings that have come out throughout the last couple months. Couple other key dates, just to point out, I think we may have previously mentioned them to you. The file sub-bids are due on 10/31. The general contractor bids are due on November 14th, and we're anticipating that we will bid, we will give that award out on November 17th. And one final thing is that we do have the construction contracts under review, and those are being reviewed by Patrini and Associates, the same firm that actually advised us on our previous school building projects. Let me just pause there and see if there's any questions about the school building project or any of those updates. Okay. All right, I'm going to jump into some maintenance items. So let's start with Bartlett. We fired up the boiler here at the high school, and we did discover a leak. This is the boiler that's been hanging on, as everyone knows. In fact, we were challenged in the past with being able to get parts. We do have some spare parts that we're hopeful will be able to be utilized, but we won't know yet until we have the maintenance folks come in, which they're scheduled to be here next week to take a look at that and get that leak resolved. So getting to the new building can't come fast enough. At Webster Middle School, we actually purchased some new storage containers for the school because the other ones were extremely rotted and well beyond repair. Those old storage containers have been removed, and what we're currently doing before we put the new ones in place is we want to get the roof on the garage repaired. Once that's repaired, the DPW is going to help us get the new storage bins put in place. The other thing that's work in progress at Webster Middle School is the screens that were damaged due to the vandalism are currently at Webster Plate Glass being repaired, and we also have Wheeler coming out to service the roof units. At Park Ave., we also have Wheeler servicing our water heater sensors, and we're having some issue with some drainage on the playgrounds that we're working on, as well as some repairs that are needed on some of the equipment, but finding some parts have been challenging, so we're continuing to look to get those resolved as soon as possible. Any questions?
Doesn't sound like there are any questions. Thank you for your updates. The next item on the agenda is the Principal's Report. Good evening, Mr. Collins.
Good evening, all. So like Superintendent Prangeli, I will start with my first bullet here about our Homecoming Week celebration, and I don't want to step on our wonderful students' report, so I'm going to ask Mohammed to weigh in. We are very excited, of course, every year in a high school, homecoming is really a staple and a sense of community and a sense of pride that comes back. It was a wonderful week. I will say it's a Barbie world, and we only live in it. That was the biggest day of the week in terms of what a pinkout looks like, and so I'd like to just say, and he might talk further about this, but of course, it ties in the wonderful month where we call attention to breast cancer awareness. And of course, as you know, the kiddos get highly involved in that, both athletically and academically. But that was the biggest day, in my opinion. It was such a great week, and Mohammed has that as his first report, so I'm going to ask him just to kind of jump in, if that's okay with all of you.
Okay, so Homecoming Week was really fun. Thank God Day was really like one of the biggest days. It was the most fun. One of the teachers made this like huge like Barbie box that like the students could just pose in for yearbook. It was really fun. We just walked around like the cafeteria during lunch, we're like, do you want to pose that? Do you want to pose in it? It was really fun. And then for Homecoming, it was one of like, it was a really good night. We, there was pizza, they sold pizza, they had drinks there, there was a DJ playing songs, there were people dancing. It was really fun. It was like a really good night away from like academics, where people could just like relax. I really liked it.
Yeah. So I have to shout out, because I think it's so important, that our, one of our Spanish teachers, Melinda Doherty, and her wonderful group of students from Student Council, student leaders in our building, in our community, worked tirelessly all week to bring these events to life. Each day was received with lots of buy-in, I think, from the students, even on Adam Sandler Day. And I said, well, what did we do on that day? So everyone picked a movie, and you pick a scene that you like. We had a giant Adam Sandler cutout, and everyone took pictures in front of it with him. It was a good time. The kids truly, truly, truly... The kids truly, truly, truly bought in, and the teachers do too. And it was, it was definitely a rewarding week, to say the least, and I'm glad that you agree from the student perspective. My second bullet is attendance, home visits, and re-engagement. As you all are probably aware, our re-engagement specialist kind of went vacant for a year, not finding someone. We are so, so happy that we are at, we have added this person to our student support team. And with her work and with her help, we have redesigned the way we look at student attendance, but also what does that re-engagement look like? And we have, it has allowed us to look at home visits and what that process looks like, as no longer do we partner with Webster Police to go on those, but administration takes the lead with our counselors. But our re-engagement specialist has really stepped up, and having her has been special. And if you don't know her, her name is Barbara Smallars. And it's been a really great experience to be able to watch them work together in terms of like, what do we do when we're re-engaging a student who has missed certain days? Before, we just, you know, looked at the letters and we do the times. You know, this letter goes for a three-day, a five-day, a ten-day, and we bring back data, and we tell you what our attendance data looks like. More importantly, what does the intervention look like? What does it look like to be proactive instead of reactive to that? So we have redesigned that. And I am pleased to say, because I know that you all love data as well as I do, and our attendance data is low, is our infractions of repeaters, repeated, repetitive, excuse me, attendance violators is low right now. So we have only done two home visits, which is really great in one quarter. We're almost to a quarter. I will take the liberty and say that two weeks almost to it. We are only two in, and that's great. So we're super excited about the, the revamp, if you will, about how we look at student attendance and then what our home visits look like. Next, our quarter one and block scheduling update. Again, I'm excited to be able to talk to teachers every day and say, hey, how is this going? You know, at a high school, changing a schedule is, is, it's massive. It's a, it's a huge undertaking. But teachers are pleased, students are pleased, because you get to really, truly complete tasks. I've spoken to, just this week alone already, in two days, AP teachers and arts teachers. And I think, just capitalizing just in those two areas right now, an AP teacher teaching that extensive curriculum, or an arts teacher teaching that hands-on material, whether it be a visual arts teacher or a chorus teacher, being able to do projects and having time with students to truly assess what that looks like, or to really diving into a novel or diving into a written project, maybe in an AP class for English, let's say. I have had great feedback, and that's important to me, to be able to report to you tonight that teachers, I think, are really buying in. They like it. And that's good. That's step one in the process of time on learning, which is the original time that I came to you all and letting you know that we were looking at what that would, would outline for us at Bartlett. So it's really important that I report to you tonight that I believe that our students like it, and it gives them more time with their teachers, of course, but our teachers are truly having more time and more impact on learning right now. And so I have been sticking to the phrase "music to my ears," if I may borrow that, in the sense that teachers are like, okay, it's a good time. It's a good time with kids. So I'm going to, I'm going to take that to the bank and take it to school committee tonight and let you know that so far, still good on that. Our MAP Free, of course, our community partnerships that I capitalized a little bit on, and in the weeks to come, we'll have more of that. And I am super excited again, as I said earlier in that report. And then lastly, our PBIS update and behavior incentives. As you know, PBIS is a huge thing for us in Webster. I believe that at the high school, you have to quote-unquote maybe up the ante a little bit. And we have aligned with Bartlett Bucks, as we're calling it moving forward, in terms of what the kids are used to in middle school. So we will be unveiling and rolling out this week with our teacher leaders first today, and then our staff in the week to come, what Bartlett Bucks will look like, and then to our students in the month to come. So incentives out there to provide monthly events, but we are going to couple back to re-engagement with our community and getting parents there. So we're looking at having a Voice Night, copying off of the hit show with Reba McEntire. She will not be coming. Maybe Ms. Siddiqui, maybe you could help us out? But yeah, so we are looking at things like that and Family Bingo Night and things, things that will allow us to not only engage our students but to engage their families. So we're going to hope to kill two birds with one stone, if I steal another adage, and put that out there. So with Bartlett Bucks, students will be able to earn the incentive during the day, but then we want to extend it at night. So myself and my two administrative staff members, Ms. Neves and Ms. Renaud, worked throughout Homecoming Week to look at the events and how much student participation we saw, but what could we do to increase it even more? Saturday night was a great event for students, but we said, what could we do to get more students here? So we were like, hey, let's look at this. And we know that our partners at the middle school really see a lot of engagement with kiddos when they're buying things. So we are going to roll out Bartlett Bucks this week. So I will be happy to come back and let you know how that's going at the high school level. It's not something we've done before, but we're super excited about it. Assistant Principal Neves is working on it currently. And like I said, our teacher leaders learned about it today, and we will be rolling it out to staff in the weeks to come. And that will be how we engage students in the daytime. And then we're looking to couple those events every month with something at night for our community folks and get our parents here. So as I've said to Principal, or excuse me, Superintendent Prangeli before, we're going to have food. So I'm probably going to hit her up with like, hey, can we get some food? Because we want to, we want to have those nights where families can come together and we can discuss how we engage students, but also how do we engage families and get more folks here? And that's what we want to do. So we're two birds, one stone, and I hope that when I come back next time, I can give you great data about what that looks like.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, all.
Lots of great things going on at Bartlett. Any questions or comments from the committee? No? Hearing none, the next item on the agenda is an update from our student representative. Good evening, Mohammed.
Good evening. So my summary's going to be really short because I already went over all the things. But so for the recent weeks in Bartlett, it has been really fun. So the DECA kids actually went to Bentley University for a leadership conference. I went there too. I had the honor to go there. It was really fun. We just like sat there and like learned how to be better in DECA and business and be like a better business student. We did like a lot of workshops. It was really fun. And then students went to Nichols for their like script that they go on every month. And then also NHS is having in their induction ceremony tomorrow at 7:00. It's going to be really fun. For sports updates, the girls JV team for volleyball won their second game against St. Bernard. Good job. Yay. For upcoming games, boys varsity football is going to Quinbog Regional Middle School, Middle High School on Friday, October 27th at 6:00 PM. And then next Monday, the JV football team is going to Quinbog Regional Middle High School on Monday, October 30th at 3:30. That's it. Any questions?
Thanks for the updates. Lots of good stuff going on with sports. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair, I have one question. I don't know if it's you, Mr. Collins, or if it's Mohammed, but the pep rally, right? So is this going to be the last one in the gym?
So we, we had extensive conversation about the delays, as you heard Business Manager Kontos talk about the dates that you, that you heard. I think Tony, Mr. Pronto, and myself are buying, buying time to have the Thanksgiving traditional pep rally there in the gym. We did, and I apologize, neither myself or Mohammed talked about it, but the pep rally happened on Friday of these homecoming week, and it went off without a hitch. So we were nervous because we only got to use one side, and we were a little bit tighter. We did move the senior class. They had their own section of the gym, which was different because we couldn't fit everybody in one side, and we were on the B side of the gym. We are going to do that again for the Thanksgiving pep rally, if we can borrow that space, because quote-unquote, we don't have a team of, of construction workers in the space at that time. So as we move forward, we do have Plan B. Plan B will be to talk to Principal Peterson about borrowing that space and the, the high schoolers being there almost all day, because it's a half a day, as you know, and doing that. That's Plan B. But right now, Mr. Pronto and I are planning with our cheerleading coach to go ahead. If you will, the homecoming pep rally was a trial run for what it would look like in a borrowed space, even though it's our space, what that'll look like. We think now that he has everything cleared out, we're going to be good to go for the Thanksgiving pep rally in that space on the B side of the gym. But that could change, depending on these construction folks and then weeks to come. If it does, I am not worried. Traditionally speaking, we will have it. We will just call on Principal Peterson and move it there.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Great question. Any other questions from Mohammed? Hearing none, well, thank you for your updates. Always nice to see you. Thank you. And the next item on the agenda, we have no items under Old Business or under New Business. So the next item is the review transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, meaning adjourned. Good night, everyone.